Good evening. I would like to call to order the Wednesday, September 13th, 2017 School Committee Meeting. The time now is 6:15 PM. At this time, we will be entering into Executive Session for continued discussion relative to collective bargaining with employee groups and the strategy to be followed and on continued ongoing litigation. The School Committee will reconvene in open session following the Executive Session at 7:00 PM. Do I have a motion to adjourn?
I'm going to make that motion.
A second?
So I have a motion, a second on the floor. All those in favor?
Aye.
This does require a roll call vote. Mrs. Bennett, how do you vote?
Aye.
Mr. Cuttles, how do you vote?
Aye.
Mr. Francis, how do you vote?
Aye.
Mrs. Sullivan, how do you vote?
Aye.
And then Chair votes aye as well. So at this time, we will be entering into Executive Session and we will be continuing with our regular scheduled meeting at 7:00 PM. Thank you. I would like to call to order the September 13th, 2017 School Committee Meeting. The time now is 7:00 PM. The September 13th, 2017 School Committee Meeting will be televised and recorded. Under the open meeting law, the public is permitted to make an audio or video recording of an open session at a public meeting. At this time, I would ask if anyone is recording tonight's meeting to please identify himself or herself. That means there's no meeting here tonight, so we'll have to take extra good pictures of all of your staff. With that being said, I would like to ask and I'd like to have our new staff join us and lead us in the pledge allegiance to the republic.
Pledge allegiance to the republic of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
At this time, I'd like to actually turn it over to our Superintendent, Mr. Malone, for our recognition this evening.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Very proud this evening to bring on many of our new hires in the district. We have a terrific group of professionals that are here to join Tuxbury Public Schools. We have several administrators joining us here tonight to support their staff. Mr. Pelletier from Special Education, Ms. Whitstone, Ms. Garrish, Mr. Hart, Mr. Weir, Dr. Osborne, Ms. Fuller, I'm not sure who else I'm missing, behind me, oh, Ms. Vogel, oh, Ms. Kastanaway, anyone else in our, okay. We also have our union co-president back there, Mr. Vassler, and anybody else, they can go behind the globe. Terrific representation of our staff and administrators and union here to support them as well. I'd just like to draw a little bit of attention to our newly developed district strategy. Our administrators, who did all the hiring of these individuals, were tasked with looking for people that met our district strategy and certainly people that come in with a growth mindset, very much interested in growing as professionals, certainly interested in the academic achievement of our students, but in helping them grow socially and emotionally. And we were also looking for staff that were certainly dedicated to working with all students. So with that strategy in mind, I think our leadership, our administrators did an outstanding job with hiring the type of professionals that we really hope will be with us for a long time and certainly push our district in a direction that benefits students. So we're very proud of that. And what I'd like to do, we have a total of 31 new teachers hired, many of them here tonight, I'd like to bring them up just so that you can meet many of them. Our first two new hires are actually administrators. So at this time, if I could have Ms. Karen Cronin, who's the principal of North Street School, and Sean O'Leary, Assistant Principal of Tuxbury Normal High School, start our lineup. And as I call your name, if you can please come up and take a position next to Ms. Cronin and Mr. O'Leary. From Tuxbury Normal High School, Sanford Abigail. From Tuxbury Normal High School, Connor Rogoing. And I will guarantee that I won't mess some of these names up. From the Wind Middle School, Elena Breton.
Have them come right up here.
From the Wind Middle School, Jessica Burton.
Tell this one to...
From the DLC preschool magician, Lisa Coswell. From the, as an EL teacher district-wide, Jade Sidemenzia. Tuxbury Normal High School, Shannon Duffy. Heathbrook School, Melissa Engelpin. From the district-wide DLC, Maria Fiori. From the district-wide behavioral specialist program, Jessica Gillian. Gillian. From Tuxbury, from Tuxbury Normal High School, Jillian Goodwin. From the North Street Elementary School, Melissa Forman. From Tuxbury Normal High School, Michael Hamcock. From Trahan Elementary School, Jacob Orbits. From Tuxbury Normal High School, Daniel Kaznoff. From the Wind Middle School, Kimberly Khan. From the ESL Department, Caitlin LaMora. From the district-wide DLC program, Laura Lemke. From the Wind Middle School, Taylor Woyet. From the district-wide behavioral specialist program, Sarah Mizlivin. From the Wind Middle School, Lauren Mistari. From the Wind Middle School, Alex Norton. From the Trahan Elementary School, Victoria O'Meara. From the North Street Elementary School, Danielle Ruderman. From Tuxbury Normal High School, Christine Smith. From the Trahan Elementary School, Elise Trevor. From the Ryan Elementary School, Rihanna Janani. From the Trahan Elementary School, Christina Valcourt. And finally, from the Heathbrook School, Sarah Walsh. Let's see if we can stage eight pictures here. So, I don't know what you can get. Where do you want me to move to? What I'm going to have is if we can do, everybody from you want, come to me right in front here, go on. And I know that violates the short call method, but we're going to do the best we can. See if we can get everybody in here.
Right there. Yes. Karen, Alex, thank you. It's where I'm most comfortable.
You're going to have the, like, dealer.
All right. We're going to do a one, two, three. Superintendent Malone, can you move in a little?
Oh, I can.
No, that way. All right, one more time. One, two, three. Got it. Great.
Thank you. Madam Chair, our new teachers for the 2017-2018 school year.
Mr. O'Leary's going to post that right away, right? He's so quick in the last four minutes. All I'd like to say is that we are so happy to have you join our team and join our community. We really love the Tuxbury Schools. We think we have so many wonderful things going on and we're so happy you're going to be part of it. And no, we say this to everyone, anyone that touches our students, know that you truly make a difference each and every day. And it's not something that comes easy. It can be difficult some days and it can be rewarding other days. And we appreciate all that you're going to do for it and we hope to see it for a very, very long time. We hope that you love it here and that you stay. So thank you so much for joining our team and we're looking forward to working with everyone. Thank you.
Great. Thank you, everybody.
You should be saying the kids walk ice cream, guys. Okay, next up on our agenda, I'm going to hand it over to our student representative, Ms. Grace Morris, going to give us our Tuxbury Normal High School report.
All right. So Best Buddies is just starting to organize their first meeting this week. They're adding a new unified basketball team to the school and are looking forward to the big year. DECA Club is starting out their season. They had their first meeting for new and returning members yesterday after school. They are also getting organized with a annual package show on November 16th at 6:00 PM at the high school. DECA members around the town, they went to local businesses and asked for t-shirts. They ended up getting 40 of them to collect for the Houston victims. And they are very pleased to say that the high school itself donated 50-plus boxes of clothing for the victims. Student Council had their first meeting this morning and are looking forward to new members that have just joined. Echo Club is doing their coastal sweep this Saturday in which they helped clean up a beach in Beverly. International Club had their car wash at MVP this weekend and with the money they raised, they were able to purchase 43 pairs of shoes and they were donating them to Houston victims. And they also, by the town, were appointed stewards of the half-herd date celebration cleanup. Drama Club just cast their new fall show, Peter and the Star Catcher, which premieres the first weekend in November. And NHS collected supplies for Houston and started their tutoring program on Tuesdays after school and Friday mornings.
Thank you so much, Grace. If you have anything, as we begin this new school year, anything that you would like any of the school committee members to attend and keep us some rest, make sure you just send us emails and let us know what's going on because it seems like you're on top of all the great things happening at the high school. So feel free to invite us, anything you think we might enjoy.
Thank you so much.
All right, have a great night. Okay, we have no presentations this evening. We'll be right along to Citizens' Board. Is there anyone wishing to speak this evening? I know that so many wonderful people are watching us this evening, not so many here, but seeing nobody, we're going to move right along to our clerk, Mr. Sullivan, who's going to present our meeting minutes.
I'd like to move the August 16th, 2017 School Committee/Administration Workshop.
I'll second that.
So I have a motion, I have a second on the floor, to approve the August 16th, 2017 School Committee Meeting Minutes as well as the Ad Mid Workshop that was held in August. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Chair votes aye as well.
I'd also like to move the regular meeting minutes of August 16th, 2017.
Second.
So I have a motion, I have a second on the floor, to approve the August 16th, 2017 regular meeting minutes. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Chair votes aye as well. Thank you, Mr. Sullivan. And now, again, I'd like to ask our clerk, Mr. Sullivan, to present our payroll.
Sure. I'd like to move the payroll, make a motion to pay the payroll for the period ending August 10th, 2017, in the sum of $1,131,336.19.
Second.
So I have a motion, I have a second on the floor, to approve the payroll period ending August 10th, 2017. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Chair votes aye as well.
I'd also like to move the school department payroll for the period ending August 24th, 2017, to be approved and certified in the amounts as shown for a total amount of $1,64,599.97.
Second.
So I have a motion, I have a second on the floor, to approve the payroll period ending August 24th, 2017. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Chair votes aye as well.
And finally, I'd like to move the school department payroll for the period ending September 7th, 2017, to be approved and certified in the amounts as shown for a total amount of $1,303,806.10.
Second.
I have a motion, I have a second on the floor, to approve the payroll period ending September 7th, 2017. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Chair votes aye as well. Thank you, Mrs. Sullivan.
Well.
Moving right along to our superintendent's staff reports. Mr. Malone, may we please have the superintendent's staff reports.
Yes, Madam Chair, thank you very much. First of all, terrific opening for the school year this year. And I have to give a lot of credit to many of the people that were here this summer, normally our administrators in the district, they did a great deal of work. Our custodians, our food service workers, our secretaries, our tech department, and our parents that helped out as well. There was a lot of work over the summer and a lot of preparation with the transportation company, with everyone that really went into helping us out from the start. So it's really great to see that level of work that happens during the summer that allows us to start off in the way that we have. So we're very appreciative of that. And certainly had a, this rating we talked a little bit about, our first two days of activities with staff arrival and some of the things that are happening with their professional development. But our staff have come back excited, our students are here, they're excited, our parents are eager, so it's a great start to the school year, so we're very happy with that. A couple of reminder notes. One is that the district-wide packing will be happening on Monday, October 16th, at 6:00 PM at the Wind Middle School Library. And the topic of that conversation will certainly be the elementary school building project and getting the packs online with some of the information to go out of that. Next meeting I hope to do, we're actually, after the October 1 report, we have, we hope to do a little bit more of a specific report in relation to the enrollment in the district. It's a trend on there, so once we have that enrollment certified after the October 1 report, we certainly want to look at that. A nice honor for Tuxbury Normal High School that was earned by the MIAA for its fortunement ship honorable. And that is received by any Massachusetts high school that has no disqualification to the school year and some of the schools. That's a great sense of culture in the town, in the school district, and specifically the Tuxbury Normal High School, so that's a, that's a great asset. We are also in the midst of partnering with Avail Technology to conduct the technology audit within the district to look at everything from the security of our servers and our internet access, to look at how we distributed personnel. We want to keep a close eye on our technology operations so that it can keep up with the number of devices that we've added to the district and our priorities as far as ensuring that we have technology-based structure in the classroom. We want to make sure we have the infrastructure that follows along with that. So we hope to have the results of that audit, hopefully within the next 30 days, to drive some decision-making on specifically how we want to approach it from the technology standpoint. So again, trying to look at ways that we can improve, ways that we can get better. A reminder to all school and community members that the Zero Waste Day will be taking place at the Wind Middle School Parking Lot on Saturday, September 23rd, from 9:00 AM to 1:00 PM. It's a great event in the town, certainly the opportunity to bring in these items to have them removed from your home and a great and easy, convenient way to do it. Great way, we have some staff members that help out, there's town officials. It's a great event and we certainly want to make sure that all of our people connected to the school community are taking advantage of this and we'll certainly be messaging this out as well. So this is fantastic.
And also, Mr. Malone, I want to touch upon special thanks to our Wind students for their volunteer...
Their voluntary community circus hours for both middle school and in some time cases, high school students. So there's a great student presence and parent presence at that and it's a, it's a great opportunity for us and it's a great opportunity for the town. So it's fantastic. Also, another reminder to date, the Apple Fest will be held on Saturday, October 28th, here at Tuxbury Normal High School. It's always a great event every year. Upcoming, we have some annual activities working with the VFW, the Voice of Democracy. That opportunity will be going out to students. That entry deadline is October 31st. And that theme this year is American History, Our Hope for the Future. And as well from the VFW, the Patriots Patent Contest, the entry deadline as well is October 31st. And that theme is America's gift to my generation. We've had some great success and opportunities with our students at multiple grade levels and with these opportunities, so we're really looking forward to doing that. Had a great opportunity the week before school opened to visit the Stuff the Bus activity at the Market Back Basket Plaza. Just a great work by some of our PAC members and parent volunteers to really take a very active role in making sure all of our students have access to the school supplies they need to be successful at school. And as we have done with past, we would like to bring them up to our new school and just to certainly recognize them. So that's a fantastic piece. Also, a huge success was our kindergarten orientation that was held before kindergarten opened. Great example of our teacher leadership and teacher opportunities. This was developed by our kindergarten teachers, designed to benefit parents and students to provide an orientation at a time that was accessible for parents and students and to certainly prepare students and parents in the first day of school. And we think that went really well, we got a lot of positive feedback. It was just great to see our teachers develop that programming with students and teachers in mind. It makes us feel really good that we're really servicing them. It's a great opportunity for our parents with their first entry with the school district who are coming into kindergarten and have that experience. We hope that continues with them and it develops a positive relationship as they continue to Tuxbury Public Schools. With that, I will hand it over to Ms. Reagan.
Thank you, Superintendent Malone. We've been busy, really busy. Lots of highlights and updates from professional development and our STEM team. Let me start with day one, opening day. Day one really sets the stage and continues to cultivate our teaching and learning goals for the 2017-18 school year. As you've heard, our key initiatives for professional development include promoting network mindset, improving teaching and learning in the classroom through our district implementations of our new ALA, math and science programming, cultivating collaborative practice through coaching and the teacher leadership teams, and all means all, those inclusive practices that differentiate for all of our students in the classroom, including their social-emotional learning needs. State-mandating training topics were addressed through our live presentations on day one, at the back-to-school principal-staff meetings, and through an online learning platform as well. All staff members, all, in the Tuxbury Public Schools are required through the Department of Education to undergo review of federal, state, and district-wide policies and laws regarding education confidentiality, IDAA, and so forth. All staff members in school districts, sign that they have reviewed and/or understand and know where to get support and help if they don't on those mandated trainings back to the first. That's an annual process. Day two, August 29th, included a myriad of both teacher and ALA trainings. Highlights of the day, I just want to tell you, were training in UDL, Universal Design for Learning by Dr. Linda Hirsch, Assistant Superintendent of Champs of Public Schools, our networking opportunities, and we help each other. She came in and provided a wonderful workshop for grades 5 through 12. We had a new Go Math update in present, workshop for grades K through 6, new science text training for grades 6 through 8, and inclusive practice training for all of our new and returning Delta T aides. Additionally, we contracted with Bill Rebus of Rebus Associates to provide professional development for our building principals, assistant principals, and district leadership team in the area of social-emotional learning in the classroom for all students. Updates from our STEM and tech team. As you can imagine, we've been really busy, working really hard, properly configuring over 2,000 new devices and getting them into the hands of teachers and students. We're very close to done. Even up to today, working with our ESL team, putting the new software platform for our access and we're testing. Additionally, they are very busy updating all of our online textbook applications. With all of the great new programs we have and the new curriculum resources, those learning, online learning platforms also update. So Karen Carey and the team, Jason Sam, Heidi, Michelle, they are just congregating down, figuring out all the online benchmarking and the new resources available to students and teachers. It's a little bit of a process, but we're getting closer every day to having those new systems up and running. Our new STEM lab at the Trahan hosted a Lego for Learning Teacher PD Day yesterday. That program, the Lego program, will be used in our STEM labs at the grade 3, 4 level of the North Street Trahan. It looks like lots of fun for both teachers and students. Just, I mean, the teachers yesterday looked like a room full of kids, not only playing with Legos, but learning how to engineer, just all kinds of different motors and things. So we know it's going to be exciting. We can't wait to show you more and hopefully our next school committee meeting. In your packet, you have a memo for the mentor stipends. I want to just outline again how the mentoring program works in accordance, not only with the Department of Education, but with our TTA collective bargaining agreement of the appendix-based stipend piece. The district provided mentoring program is a requirement of the Massachusetts Department of Education. It's required for all of our new teachers, even incoming teachers to the district in order to receive professional teaching status and in order to fulfill the requirements of their educational licensure. It's also a keystone really to our professional development program for our new teachers and our administrators. Teachers wishing to mentor need to apply for open positions at their school with the building principal. Mentor applicants, a chosen or successful mentor applicants are chosen based on several key criteria. First of all, they have to have professional teaching status. We look for a like, jobalike licensure. We want a mentor, for example, in high school science, to be working with our new science teachers here at high school. We look for mastery of key teacher management software applications like Aspen, Teach Point, Mastery Connect, because the depth is really where the line shows for happens with new teachers mastering those teacher software applications. And then the memo addresses the award the mentor receives for all those hours of service to our new teachers. Let me tell you that that award is achieved after they've either participated in the training that year, so you see the three different levels, or every five years, they need to renew their training to maintain the right to mentor new teachers. They attend monthly after-school meetings, two-hour meeting sessions with their protege and the mentor facilitators. They also are available and on-call with the new protege, the new teacher, for 30 to 50 hours of support throughout the school year, and they log and document all of those support times, as well as non-evaluative observations. So they really shepherd that new teacher, not only on the Tuxbury way, but on the different developmental stages teachers will go through in their first. And then second year, teachers are all there, meeting second 50 hours of mentoring with variety of teachers. So it's a non-evaluative position, but one that provides that support. There are two stipend levels. If you've attended the training and the meetings and the hours, that's a higher stipend. If you're not in that year where you attended the training, it's slightly lower standard. And for one time only, a mentor teacher can, in lieu of the stipend, take three in district credits. So that's a one-time. So this is where you see the three levels of award, you would say, for mentor teachers in Tuxbury. And then finally, I'd like to say your consent attending, you see, just as a courtesy, the Doing the North Street PACs providing with their annual fundraising for the school year. Back in August, the Heathbrook and Trahan PAC gave you their plans. However, we've asked all the PACs to put together a little grid for you for our next meeting, for all of the major fundraising happening in all of our schools, so you can just see on one page what fundraising parents should be seeing in the fall this year at schools. At our next school committee meeting, I'd like to invite Karen Baker O'Brien to present, as you have requested, on the PSAT update, as well as our AP reporting and highlights. She'll also bring in, we'd like to monitor, Alice Summer, in terms at Drummond Fisher, so she'll highlight some of the stuff going on here at the high school, accompanied with Jason Sam and his team, to show you some of that with those people, PD and some video clips of teachers and students who's in it. Let's look at, let's look inside.
I just only have a couple of things. As Superintendent Malone said, all the departments have been really busy. I just kind of want to do an extra shout-out to all the maintenance departments because they have tried to make every principal happy and try to get into every school and outside of every school and get it all ready. And on that note, we have created, I know that you had spoken about wanting to see exactly what the principals are looking for in each one of the schools. So what we did is we put the work orders all on a Google Doc. So I have already shared it with Superintendent Malone, just to make sure that we're all geared and roll it out. And we're going to share it with all the principals so they can kind of go in and see what else needs to be done at this school, where they are, who got assigned, when it's going to be done. And I can open it up to you too, the five of you as well, just so you can kind of see everything that's going on. Town manager this morning sent us this special town meeting warrant. And as we speak, over in the copy center, we have our staff working on 18,000 and 12,000 copies. We're hoping to have them, actually, you know, we will have them all to the post office by Monday, and that we shift out either Monday or Tuesday to get into the community camps to make sure that they have it at least two weeks before the actual meeting that's coming up.
Thank you. Does anyone have any questions or comments? Anything that was...
I was just going to say to the public, you might want to attend the next school committee meeting to see all the nice stuff, items that are going on.
Thank you, Mrs. President. And then the one thing Mrs. Reagan could do to the, as always, our PACs are so extremely generous, couldn't do what we do without them, but there was a very generous donation at the Ryan School for $10,000. Can you just talk a little bit about the scope of that? I know that was in our packet, but people don't know the actual details.
I can talk about vision from the courtyard of the Ryan School. If you know the Buckvitz, the Ryan School, you know there's a courtyard, it's an inner square. And Principal McGinnis's vision is that it really becomes a living, breathing educational environment, more of a outside classroom. So the upgrades honoring Janet Hebert's memorial out there, because there is a memorial to a past service manager over at the Ryan. We will move that, because it seemed it's sort of at the center of one of the ends of the courtyard. What Principal McGinnis would like to do is have a handicap accessible walkway that goes from one end of that courtyard to the other with... from one end of that courtyard to the other with two learning spaces, and then that memorial, as well as some easy-to-keep plantings that make the space look beautiful from inside and out. So it's a, it's a little bit of a heavy lift, because it could be a disruptive space as well, if there's a lot going on out there, all of those inner classrooms, you know, they're in fishbowl. And so she's looking at designing the space so it can boast up to two classrooms and not be so disruptive to the those inner classes going through.
Wonderful. Thank you for that. Okay, moving right along, we're going to move to our consent agenda. So I'd like to ask this time, is there anyone wishing to take anything off our consent agenda meeting? If not, we're going to make a motion.
I'd like a motion to accept tonight's consent agenda.
So I have a motion, I have a second on the floor, to accept tonight's consent agenda. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Chair votes aye as well? And going right into committee reports, we'll take up the elementary school building committee first.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Just a couple of notes on the elementary school building committee. The next couple of days, the building committee will be receiving a draft of the RFP for the design selection with the, excuse me, with the centering on the criteria for evaluation of education. So we'll be getting that in the next couple of days from Peter Collins from Erie International. Going to try to set up a meeting of that subcommittee for sometime next week. Also, in that same email, we'll be receiving a list of seven to nine schools that potentially fit what we're trying to do here in Tewksbury with size, scope, and recently constructed buildings, so we can start our onsite tours. So we're moving along, and we continue to go, and the next big thing that we want to do is, as Superintendent Malone said, at the townwide PAC, we'll start to kick off our phone communication with the public and the balance.
Wonderful. Thank you, Mr. Francis. Mr. Cutlass, do you have anything to add to the public, please?
No, I was, oh, thank you.
Okay, thank you. Moving right on to the Tewksbury Education Coalition.
Thank you, Madam Chair. The TDF is gearing up for its annual school auction, which will be held November 17 at 7 o'clock at the Tewksbury Country Club. Tickets are being sold at all the school open houses currently, and also available at the community service center, and it will be made available on the community pass. The TDF is also having a meeting on September 21st at 7 o'clock. They are encouraging all new membership to attend that meeting if they can, or reach out to them from the email, and they're also on the website. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you, Mrs. Bennett. Is there any questions? Okay, moving right along to our wellness committee.
I have no update at this time. The next meeting is Monday, September 18th. I would like to note that September is recovery month, so for any of those of unfortunately dealing with those issues, there's plenty of resources here in Tewksbury. Please reach out, whether it's yourself, whether it's someone else, you can never start too early in prevention, is obviously the best medicine before we even get there, so I'll have an update at the next meeting.
Thank you, Mr. Sullivan. Okay, moving right, next is our, taking up our policies, will you, Mrs. Bennett?
Got a long list here. So first, Section J student policy has been reviewed and recommended to be accepted with no changes. This is the final, second and final reading for J I C F E ruling prevention. So I'll make a motion to accept that.
Second.
I have a motion, I have a second on the floor, to accept that. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Chair votes aye as well?
And then this next set, again, is from the M A S C policy director, who later reviewed and provided us recommendations. We have reviewed about 13 policies and are recommending to rescind, as policies that we've done are unnecessary, and this, again, is the first reading for D J G vendor relations, H negotiations, I H A E physical education, I J J textbook selection, I J K supplementary materials, I J M special interest material, J V A student-to-student harassment, J I C G tobacco use by students, J R A dash R regulations on student records, K E B complaints about school personnel, K E B dash R complaints about school personnel, K E C complaints about materials, K J A relations with booster. Again, this is just the first reading. We welcome any feedback from the public on that. I will go through 24 policies that we've reviewed, and we have incorporated suggestions that have been made from the community and our administrative staff, and they are in this packet. And those policies are, have been revised as a result of legal changes, changes in practice, or updating language to reflect modern needs, and this, again, is the first reading, for A C E non-discrimination on basis of disability, A D C smoking on school premises, B E A school committee powers and duties, B B B A and B B B B school committee member qualifications, both of office, B D D school committee superintendent relationship, B D E subcommittees of school committee, B D F advisory committees to the school committee, B E D A notification of school committee meetings, B E D V agenda format, B E D H public participation at school committee meetings, B H E use of electronic messaging by school committee members, B I A new school committee member orientation, B I B A school committee conferences, conventions and workshops, C B school superintendent, C B D superintendent contract, C B I evaluations of superintendent, C E administrative council cabinet committees, C H policy implementation, C H A development of regulation, C H C regulation dissemination, D V annual budget, D B D budget planning, D B J budget transfer authority, and finally, D D funding proposal and application. Again, this is the first reading. Again, we see any public review of these policies, and please reach out to us, Superintendent Sir, if there are any questions on these. We will be having the second and final meeting next school committee. And we are leaving again for our policy meeting on the 27th. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you, Mrs. Bennett. Okay, moving right along to old business, over to you, Mrs. Regan.
At this time, we have no new extraneous and class updates, as we decided that we have looked at various elements of the data, and really have, of those factors, have there been any participations, discrepancies, and to share that information with the state. So there's a new notice to receive from the commissioner today on some updates, we'll share with you at the next meeting.
And then, Mr. Rule? Of the school committee meeting calendar?
I mean, we're just, yeah, we're just putting that out there.
Yes. That was the, right.
Mrs. Johnson, was that the August date that we changed, I believe, from the last posted schedule, or the July, one of those dates?
It was July, wasn't it?
I don't think it was changed, I don't think it was changed, it was this year's.
Right.
So we definitely need to go there.
We thought we were doing last year's, and I think we did this year.
So I guess at this point, I had to put out, I had to put out to my colleagues, does anyone have any questions or concerns about the, even though the state right now is a draft, we've wrote this in as our schedule for the upcoming year, for the 2018 meeting schedule. As you can see, obviously, the only thing there to be announced, we have retrieved, we usually wait until, we'll look at administration, that happens sometime in the summer. Other than that, the other dates are noted here, including both our annual and special town meetings as well. So no one has any questions or concerns? Now, this is multiple times we've seen this, if someone would make a motion to approve the upcoming school calendar, that would be terrific.
I'll make the motion to approve the upcoming school calendar.
So I have a motion, I have a second on the floor, for the approval of the 2018 school committee meeting calendar. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Chair votes aye as well? So we can post that up on the website, and really as tomorrow. Okay, moving right on to enrollment for new business.
Madam Chair, again, as I mentioned in my report, what I, we'd like to do is wait for the official October 1 report, to look at our enrollment, and maybe do a comparison, a little longer-term comparison. Certainly, we're looking at class sizes and maybe some small blips, and seeing if, what the trend is going to be on there, but that's why the state waits for the official October 1 report to sort out any new students enrolling and students who have moved. So I think once we have that official report, we'd like to look a little bit holistically on the enrollment in the district, as it bridges in with our new elementary school building project and other elements, and see if some of our actual real-time data in trends match from our projections.
Wonderful. I mean, the only thing that catches, I think, probably jumped out at everybody, I think that would all agree, is we've always made that commitment to classroom size, and that's been something that this current committee stands by. So there was only really one classroom that jumped out, and that was at the North Street. It was sitting at 26.
Grade 3.
You know, we always like to see under 25. But it looks like that entire grade at the North Street is sitting at 25, 24, like they're teething all over there, so that looks like the numbers are high at the North Street, you know, in comparison to some of our other schools, you know, we're looking at 18, 17, so.
And we have, Madam Chair, added some supports to the North Street to help with that. We have not added another classroom, but we have added some reading supports to the age of assistant teachers in the classrooms, and we've added some personnel to try to address some of that. We are sensing, and that's why I want to look at the long-term data, but right now we're looking at it as kind of a anomaly of a year, so we're a little bit hesitant to run and jump and add classrooms or do some pieces to that, unless it looks like it's going to be more.
So I mean, I guess we just want to keep an eye on that, if we for, had some reason, had a whole bunch of third graders move into that specific, you know, we just want to give a heads-up on that, because it is something we've committed to, so it does happen from time to time, they're all pretty much even, and we are right around that 25 as a portion, one is 26, but again, great support and great teaching, it's certainly doable, but we just want to keep an eye on that. All the other classroom sizes look terrific throughout the district, I will say, and I did notice the trend at the high school looked like, I mean, it goes, right, cyclical. Some classes are much larger than others, we do look like that, freshman sophomore class sizes, certainly our freshmen is a little bit lower, but, you know, cyclical, it kind of goes with the cycle coming up, even through the junior high and the middle schools, so just keep an eye on that, and I think that's great. How are we doing with our kindergarten classes?
Very well, Madam Chair. We're a little bit lower than we were last year. We had certainly had to make some decisions over time last year, whether to be wound up from the initiation of a full-day program, adding one teacher, we're doing, then right before school, we're adding another teacher at the Heathbrook last year. We're keeping on that trend. We did add a teacher at the Heathbrook in first grade to match that kindergarten group that had moved up. But we're, kindergarten can be a little bit more difficult to project. We were prepared for a same-size number of students coming in, we're seeing a little bit less, but it is still early, so we'll see with that action.
We appreciate all the hard work, we know it goes into really watching the numbers and sometimes reallocating staff, so we appreciate that. Mr. Francis?
Thank you. When I was looking at the numbers, I find it interesting that the largest class that we have next to the eighth grade is the first grade. So as that moves forward to next year, if you're looking at next year's second grade, potentially we're looking at 40 more children than we have this year. I think that's a reflection to what we had last year, or the first year of all that case, so moving forward, it'll be interesting to see the first graders, it keeps getting bigger, which isn't a bad thing, it's a good thing.
Anybody else have any other comments or... Okay, with that being said, on to our next item, request to, I have a memo for Mrs. Bolbo?
Uh, yes, Madam Chair, we have, actually, those go hand-in-hand. The first part is the establishment of class student activities account for the current freshman class, class of 2041, to establish that account for that fundraising purposes for that class, as they move through the high school and graduate, and find their activities, and formally set up that account for them. And it's also in conjunction with that is removing the account for the class of 2017, because of certain protocol that falls within. Within those monies that were left over from the class of 2017, 50% went to the Princeton advisory council, the other 50% was distributed over to the other three classes to go into their student account. So that, that wanted to say, with that, with the student, with Princeton's advisory account, they were actually able to purchase some hanging plants out here in cafeteria, to give a nice visual, and also to recognize the class of 2017, and their fundraising, it's certainly a legacy that they've maintained in school. And any other, the other 50% was distributed over to the three classes.
Would you pick a formal vote on that, and... I mean, because it has to do with some money.
So establish one, and then...
Yeah. So we'll do two separate ones, and what I'd like to do is just to vote, although even though, you know, we're talking a little money, one probably has no money yet, since they probably haven't gotten any twos yet, let's take them up separately. Someone would like to make a motion? I'd appreciate that.
I'd like to make a motion that the following club be added to the student activity account of the class, the upcoming class of 2021.
I'll second.
So I have a motion, I have a second on the floor, to add a Tewksbury High School to class of 2021 for a student activity account. Mrs. Bennett?
Aye.
Mr. Cutlass?
Aye.
Mr. Francis?
Aye.
Mr. Sullivan?
Aye.
And chair votes aye as well, that she names as well, thank you.
I also would like to make another motion that the following club be removed from the SSA as of October 1st, 2017, and that would be the class of 2017.
Awesome.
So I have a motion, I have a second on the floor, to request Tewksbury High School remove the class of 2017 student activity account. This requires a vote, Mrs. Bennett?
Aye.
Mr. Cutlass?
Aye.
Mr. Francis?
Aye.
Mr. Sullivan?
Aye.
Chair votes aye as well, again, that she names as well. We want to welcome the class of 2021 to Tewksbury High School. We're looking forward to doing some great things here at the high school, and as always, we wish the class of 2017 all the best in whatever endeavors they're doing this fall. Okay, moving right on to school committee matters of interest, we're going to start with you this evening, Mr. Sullivan.
Yes, as I stated earlier, September's recovery month, there's a great group in town, Inter Action Recovery, they're holding their second annual road race right here at the high school on Sunday, starts at 9 o'clock. They're a fantastic group of people that aren't just talking about making a difference. They've raised over $100,000 already, I believe they've got the state legislature to fund about $100,000 as well. They're looking to get a house in to help people that have substance issues, so I have that. As Race Morris pointed out, the beautification committee is having its fall cleanup on October 21st, you can meet at 8:30 at town hall. And most importantly, the special education PAC, it was a fantastic meeting held on September 5th, many, many interested families, very encouraged by all the people that are willing to step up and be a part of this PAC this year. We had about 40 people there. Our next meeting will be on September 19th, it's right here at the high school at 6:30. People are encouraged to come in early at 6 o'clock, meet all the wonderful people that are going to be involved in getting this thing back together, so I'm very encouraged, obviously, thank you to everyone that stepped up and is willing to serve in this committee and committee, and to the people that just want to come and show up and have their voice heard and make this better for all of the kids in our district, so thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Sullivan. Mr. Francis?
I just have a couple of things tonight. I think this is going to be a great event. The Tewksbury Country Club is proud to invite all Korean and Vietnam-era veterans currently living in Tewksbury for appreciation dinner on Thursday, November 9, 2017, starting at 6 p.m. Each veteran of that era will be allowed to bring one guest. If you're interested in attending, you can contact Liz Carey at (978) 851-9165, or her email, lizwarrencarey@gmail.com. I think it's going to be a great event. I know they did something very similar for the World War II veterans, and I think it's great to honor all the veterans. The other thing I have is, I had the honor Monday of just attending the 9/11 memorial, 16th anniversary ceremony, and there were a couple of things that hit me as I was standing there. First of all, I can't believe it's been 16... First of all, I can't believe it's been 16 years since that eventful day. But to see the amount of people that were there, it seems to me, and I try to go every year as I can, it was one of the biggest crowds that we ever had in terms of 16 years later. And it's a great night to remember what happened on that day, but it's also a great night to honor our first responders and all the work that they do. Anybody who's watched the news with the first responders of Don, for Hurricane Harvey and Hurricane Earl, it only goes to show just how important they are. And I suggest anytime you see a first responder anywhere, I know with the military, we always thank everybody for their service, but we should also thank our first responders for their service. And the other thing that hit me as I was standing there, thinking about our school district, roughly 80% of our students weren't even born yet on that, on that eventful day. So I think it's very important that as history goes on, that children and our children's children know what happened on that day and how this country came together. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Francis. Mr. Cutlass?
I'll second, Madam Chair.
Wonderful. And I guess on other, because we'd like to wish our staff and our families a wonderful school year as we're a couple of weeks in. And as always, we look forward to seeing everyone at our next school committee meeting, which is September 27, 2017. At this time, I'd like to ask, are there any future agenda items? If not, may I have a motion?
Make a motion to a chair.
I have a motion of a second on the floor. All those in favor?
Aye.
Chair votes aye as well. We look forward to seeing everyone on September 27th. Have a wonderful evening. And as always, feel free to reach out to any of us at any time during the school year. Thank you.